So we'll start with the pledge.
All right, so.
Counselor Katz.
President.
Counselor Coulter.
President.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Drix. Counselors Perry Hilton and DeMadera Saraps.
Our first item on tonight's agenda for a special meeting is Counsel President Coulter's distribution of fiscal impact statement supporting the IBPO collective bargaining agreement, that's the police, expected to be voted upon at February 25th meeting.
Twenty fifth?
That's if I'm able to get the contract to make public and the investment, to make public three days.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna see if, Jan, did you want to introduce this, or do you want me to try to speak to it, or this is, I think you're the owner, but of the document. It's been a collaborative effort, I'm sure.
Okay.
And I have some other informal handouts of mine to talk to.
Okay, so this particular handout is a very brief summary. It's attached to a larger Excel file that shows the calculations of the fiscal impact of the proposed contract with the police union. As was discussed the last time, there is a tentative agreement, and the council voted to move forward with that. It wanted to make sure that the information is posted in time so that there can be a vote to ratify or not ratify next week. And just to be clear, what has been posted so far is the tentative agreement itself, not the draft contract or.
Not the red line, but the agreement.
Right, correct, yeah.
And so I can't remember which meeting it was, but we actually took a vote that indicated our preliminary support of it and our release of the contract. And then this is the fiscal impact statement, which is required to be posted, I think, for three days. We're trying to give almost a week for that. And the important thing, I think, to recognize is that the dollar and percentage changes that you see, they cover base salary and longevity and some items, but actually don't capture all of the savings that there might otherwise be. So I don't know if it's at this meeting or really at the vote meeting next week that we want to go line by line and explain, you know, how this impacts, say, over time, or how this might impact something along those lines. But if it's okay with you, I was gonna speak for maybe five minutes on an attempt that I made on trying to capture some of the OPEP impact, because that's something that was, I think I can speak for most of us, that it's very important to try to begin to get a framework that starts to attack the OPEP problem, which we've heard from the auditors on the municipal side, is something like $19 million liability, which is now, though we've been talking about it for many, many years, is actually getting booked on the books, which is probably the right thing to do. So what I did is I took the master spreadsheet, which resulted in this report, which is the, I think, unless there's some objection, will be the official fiscal impact statement. We can always, and what I did was I tried to take a shot at what would the impact on retiree health plans be? And so if you look at this sheet that's rather small print and says summary estimates, this is, takes some of the assumptions that we have in the spreadsheet that built the fiscal impact statement, such as the cost of health insurance today and the anticipated cost of what it would be under a new contract, and it adds a bunch of assumptions. Now, as in all cases, assumptions might be correct or incorrect, so obviously, you know, this needs to be looked at, but I took a shot at, you know, how many retirees are in the system, how many years might they be receiving health insurance through, from Tiverton, hazard a guess at how many of them are family policies, which of course are more expensive than individual, you know, I just put two-thirds, one-third, that could be wrong, but just something to try to, and what I, what we, the other thing that's really important, perhaps one of the most important numbers on here, is where it says, enter an assumption for the average annual growth rate of the policy. This sheet here uses a 5% number, which is the number that I heard is what the auditors use.
Which do you use that?
This is the summary estimate sheet.
Okay.
So everything on the left that says enter is in the spreadsheet, which I'm happy to circulate.
So you were just talking about the cost of family policy?
Right, right. Anything that's enter, you can toggle, you can change that number. So if you think that this is wrong, or you think that, well, what would happen if we had 35 retirees instead of 30, I think I'm in the area code, I sanity checked it with Justin Katz, and so that average rate is, of course, a very big driver. And discount rate is, not to be too technical, but I think it's correct to say that it's 0% here, because we have very, very little money set aside for unfunded liabilities. And because of that, that means it's not growing as an investment, because there's nothing really there. We're sort of in a pay-as-you-go mode. And then all the lines that say calc show you in present value terms, in sort of today's dollars, what the impact would be if there were no cost increase at all, if there were 2% cost increase, if we didn't change the contract as it exists today, and what, and what we, or at least what I had estimated might happen if we adopt, if we do adopt the tentative agreement. This is a framework, a beginning. I don't know that I've ever seen this done before in Tiverton. So there are other things, this just talks about retiree health insurance, it doesn't bring in dental and life insurance, it does not take account for the HSA contributions that the town would make, or the 1% employee contributions, I think those are gonna roughly wash out, so that could change the numbers a little bit. But at the end of the day, what I would focus on are the three numbers that are in bold. And what they're trying to get at is, and a positive number is, sort of budget speak, unfavorable, and a negative number is a favorable result. And so if you look at this sheet, which would assume 30 retirees who on average retire at age 41 and stay in the system for 37 years, and two-thirds of which are in a family policy, at the cost that we have today, growing at 5% a year, the cost of that would be $1.3 million over zero, which, you know, I don't know that anybody expects health insurance to never go up, but it gives you an idea. 2% shows you that if you use the baseline of a 2% cost, which is, 2% is a number I prefer for a variety of reasons, we would actually be saving $800,000. And if you measured the savings against the trajectory, if we did nothing, if we took our hands off the wheel and just let the current contract go, we'd be talking about a savings of potentially $5 million over that. So that's what this sheet tries to show in detail. This sheet here, and I'm sorry I didn't label these, but it shows a table of years 1 through 18.5, okay? Says family, individual growth from the upper left corner. This is essentially the same type of calculation, just doing it a different way. So instead of using a discounted present value formula, it builds it year by year. So you can, if you want to ignore any of the sheets, you can ignore the one that looks like a table, because it's already built into the model. But for those that are, that like to see it in a table form, there's this one.
Can I ask you a question? Are we talking about growth of trying to fund this program, or actual what we owe to these people?
So if, I think what it does is it says, what would be the impact on the other post-employment benefits liability over the life, over the life, like going into the future? I hesitate to say the word forever, but for at least the next 30 years, because once you get out to year 31, 32, because it's so far out, it doesn't move the number as much as the next 30 years. And then finally, this last one has A, B, C, D, E, and F on it, okay? And this is something that I think is somewhat important, because what it does is it changes their six different assumption scenarios. So if you look, you'll see that they have different growth rates of 3%, 5%, 7.5%, 10%. As you could imagine, a 10% annual growth is dramatically higher than a 3% annual growth. The one that I think is closest to our best guess would be the 5% model, which is the one that the actuaries are using. And you can also change the percentage that are family policies, everything that I told you on the more detailed sheet, that you can change in assumption and see how the math changes at the bottom. This just tries to show that in a summary form, so that you kind of have an idea of how sensitive, how sensitive things are.
Are we at 4% right now?
The, well, they bounce every year, I think, was it just a year ago, we actually held flat, which is amazing, and the auditors are using 5%. And I believe that for this sheet, the official town administrator sheet, is using a more conservative, and by conservative I mean a higher percentage, sort of closer to a worst-case scenario, not a worst-case scenario, but a more unfavorable scenario of 7.5. So you can change that number. And so if you look at, say, the scenario C versus scenario E, which is identical, assumes 30 retirees that are in the system for 37 years, meaning on average, they're 18 and a half years to go, at the costs, 5% growth versus 7.5% growth, it changes the, it changes the total cost, you know, by a couple million dollars, right? And so that's obviously a very, very large driver. I'm comfortable using 5% because that's what the auditors are using, but there's certainly room for reasonable disagreement, and this sort of goes to show you how sensitive the bottom line is based on these assumptions. So, having said that, I know that's a lot to digest, I'd be happy to walk through this with anybody that's interested. I'm not asking for this to be officially adopted or anything, but what I think is important to see here is that what's not shown on this sheet, and I don't think the administrators disagree, and that there are OPEP savings, and that's part of the reason why he recommends and we are tentatively set to approve, is because there are lots of, I think we're really starting, I think it's fair to say, the first time really getting a handle on the OPEP liability that's just been growing out of control off the books and starting to do something about it, so.
So OPEP for most people, you don't know what that means?
Right, so it's, right, the other post-employment benefits are predominantly health, but I think it also includes.
Life insurance usually.
Life and dental. What it doesn't include, which I think we might want to think about also, is the accrued time off. So if somebody, if there's, I don't actually know what the liability is, but I imagine if, you know, if everybody in, every town employee terminated employment today, in addition to their final paycheck, we'd have to, you know, imagining half a million dollars or something like that, of sick time, vacation time, that type of thing. I don't know that we've ever set up a reserve for that, but that is not in the OPEP definition. I think that's, is there anything else in OPEP that isn't, really, it's mostly health is the big driver, because pension is separate.
Can I just ask you one question on this? You're assuming, you have done different assumptions for what you projected, feel okay, 5% on an average is probably good for the increase of the cost of the insurance, but you're not taking anything into effect that as that increases and that premium is up, that there will ever be any kind of employer, employee contribution to the actual premium? You're assuming that over all these years, they're only gonna be responsible to pay their share of your co-pay?
Right, that's exactly, assuming the new contract.
With never hitting the premium.
Right, right, that's exactly right, so.
Because if you filtered something in there for that, eventually.
Yep, right.
This would really distort these assumptions.
It really tries to show, if the current health insurance status, as we have it today, were continued, the current trajectory, versus if this contract is approved, would that, and that trajectory continued for at least 30 years, what would it look like?
I guess if I had time seeing out for 30 years, because I would assume that somewhere along the line, which was the intent of these HSAs, the premium would also be, you know, affected by this, too.
Oh, and it is.
I mean, maybe 20 years out, but I don't think we're still gonna be holding the same.
And the hope, I don't hold myself as a health insurance specialist, but in some experience I've had in this, I think you'll see the growth of the policy premiums lower in an HSA model than in a traditional model. So that's another reason why, and I'm just speaking for myself, that I'm comfortable with the 5% number, especially in an HSA setting, but that's just.
Because a premium's haven't gone down since we started the HSA.
Right, but they, but they probably didn't grow as high as, at a rate as fast as they otherwise would have, so. Lot there, and I'll turn it back to, if I have any questions, I'm happy to talk about more, but I don't wanna.
Just a quick question, does the, when you compare to the current trajectory, does that assume the current family policy and individual policy numbers as well?
It assumes, it assumes these, 24, 6, 1, 8, and 9, 7, 4, 5.
Continue on.
Yes.
And you've also taken into account the lower, the payments to the retirees, isn't there a provision?
That part I didn't model, just frankly, because I ran out of time, but for 10 years, if I have this right, for 10 years, the town is going to make contributions towards the HSAs, I think it's $4,000, maybe $2,000, whether it's family or single, for 10 years. But the retiree, the retired employee is also contributing 1%, which is roughly $500, $600, but that doesn't stop at 10 years. So I think they actually probably wash each other out, but I haven't, I haven't done the math on that. If any.
Is the goal of this to establish a fund that then starts earning interest, like to fund this OPEP, make it more stable funding wise, as opposed to pay-as-you-go?
Again, this is just, just me, I, it's so hard to model this with the type of precision, I mean, and I don't know that we want to spend, you know, tens and tens of thousands of dollars of having an actuary do this every time, but I do think it's important to explain that this contract, which shows important things like salary, really doesn't tell all of the story, which is really starting to get a handle on the OPEP number.
Okay.
And instead of it growing sort of exponentially, right, we're at a point where if you, if you, and again, I'm speaking for myself, I feel like a 2%. The reason I talk a lot about 2% is 2% is close to what is historically inflation, it happens to be halfway between 0%, which is what this, which is what happens under state law, if we don't adopt a new budget, then it just continues, and 4%, which is the state tax cap, turns out half of that is 2%. And I'm also keenly aware that, you know, three of the towns that surround Tiverton have a 2.5% tax cap, so I find that 2% number to be very reasonable, I'm sure there, you know, there's room, maybe it should be less than that, but, you know, looking at a span of 30 years, you know, so when I, according to this calculation, what this says is that assuming that kind of a baseline, we are actually gonna lower the OPEP liability by almost $1 million. And this is just, by the way, retirees, this is not the active force. So I suspect that it may be a little bit better than that. So it's not intended to start a plan, it's a fund, it's just necessary to say, how big is this problem, and can we start to bring it down? I know it's gonna take a long time, but at least we're not making the problem worse.
If I could, I think, pardon Aziz's question might have been differently intended. The idea here, there, I mean, obviously, if you have a liability, there are two ways you can get it down, you can pay money toward it, or you can reduce what you're promising. So this is, this is more on the side of reducing the promises that create the liabilities.
Okay.
This doesn't have much to do, I don't think, with actually putting money into an account.
Okay.
One thing I'd note, though, just in case people are having any trouble following, the sheet that has the table that says total compensation, that's sort of the current cost of this contract. Rob's projecting out to the future what the changes in the long term on our other post-employment benefits would be, but this should have an effect as well on current, which is not calculated here, so as we lower our projected liability, what we have to pay toward plans and such should go down, so.
Right, and to bridge, to connect those thoughts, because we are, in fact, of course, paying as we go, essentially, I mean, there are people on the plan right now, I think about 30 or 32 today, as we sit here today, are drawing health insurance as retirees, so we're paying for that. So it's, so we are funding, I mean, we're meeting the promise, so it's a question of whether we should, in addition to what we're paying today, set aside even more money. And so this, and I think that's what Justin is getting at, is that, is that next year, what we have to pay next year, we should see an impact, some impact.
It sounds like one of the, some of the reading I've done, the tension seems to be between, does the municipality try to have a fund that is funded, or do you swing the other way and increase the employee contribution to the plan, which is?
Well, employee contributions would go into the fund, so it's whether you budget to add, put additional money into it.
Right.
Or both the employee and employer are putting in.
Right.
And my suspicion, as we saw pensions a decade or more ago, the government accounting standards board is probably gonna start requiring municipalities to address OPEP in some way.
Yep.
And probably state law as well, so the more we can get ahead of it, reducing the liabilities, when that kicks in, the less of another big shock we're gonna have.
Yeah.
Just, I looked up, because it came up, the compensated absences, which is the liability for the sick time, this year in our audit is $1.2 million. So if everybody retired this year, that's what we would have to pay out, that's up from 1.08, so 1.1 million last year. And I think this year, we paid out 30-something thousand, so, but that is out there as well, and I think it's kind of, it's new that they're putting that in the audit, so everybody's moving into that direction of really making sure we're aware of what's out there.
Yep.
So my, when I look at the official fiscal impact statement, which shows a three-year change of about $170,000, you know, I can't say it's, you know, plus or minus some percentage, because this, at the end of the day, is actuarial and estimation, but I would, I think that we're actually bringing the OPEP down, potentially as much as $1.5 million over time. And that's, I just think is an important thing that we should mention. And I also, again, to speak for myself, appreciate that the, the sheet on our request, and also with compliments to the town administrators, our chief negotiator, we felt it was very important that we keep that 1% contribution in there to help send the message that we're working together to try to get this OPEP under control, and at least it's not, you know, it's not growing, you know, it's, we're starting to bring it down, it'll take some time, but, anyway, I didn't mean to take that much of your time, but happy to talk about it.
Fascinating.
Justin said fascinating.
Do we need any kind of vote to release this publicly, or?
No, I've already released it, yeah. Again, these are.
It's gonna be posted, eh?
And I didn't know if there was.
Oh, the official town, the official.
Three days becomes tomorrow, so, 30 days, so, because the meeting's Monday.
Well, we want it out for longer.
This has to be posted along with the contract for three days before we can vote on it, so.
Well, the TA has been out, the tentative agreement has been out since the day after.
Yeah.
That's on the website, too.
So the actual wording change, and I think the media's covered some of that, is there, and then this is another piece, which shows the fiscal impact statement, $170,000 over three years, but there are other favorable developments that are, just trying to capture them, because they're hard to estimate.
So I'm gonna put this.
Do you want to see it, though? I feel like that's, this is the town administrator's document, do you want?
I was just asking, I don't know, I mean, it seems, with at least, we could say we have the consensus of the council to post this and make it public, is sufficient, so I guess, yeah, this in the, this in the contract should be available by whatever process.
Do you think we'll have the contract by tomorrow? Or because if not, they're not gonna put this on Monday, they're not gonna have it posted.
I'm gonna try.
So we're assuming it might meet Monday, if not, follow.
All right, and any other discussion on the IBPO agreement, or questions?
I know the president mentioned it in part, but I do want to recognize that the police union has negotiated in good faith, and recognize the challenge that the town is facing with increasing cost over time. I appreciate, too, the way they conducted themselves during the negotiation, and that we actually could make quite a bit of progress on bringing these costs under control.
And they are apparently playing hardball out there, you know, delivering Valentines and delivering babies in the parking lot, so they're really putting pressure on us to approve their contract.
They deliver the babies?
All right, so, moving on to item number two, which is discussion and possible votes on fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. From my perspective, this is really a workshop for questions people have, myself, I've got my head around the larger items, I'm not sure I have a whole lot of specific things, this is just my opinion, but I think we'd be better off not necessarily voting on anything tonight, just gathering any information on items we might, we might have questions about. Well, do we, why don't we start with the, why don't we start with the council, and any, any questions or discussions? I mean, there are some, some policy implications of some of these things, such as an OPEP contribution, and I mean, if anybody has conversation points they want to make about that in particular, or any of the other ones, I mean, we've talked about the industrial park, that kind of thing, I did have a question on that, if, do we, do we know the, how much money is currently set aside for that?
I don't, I had hoped that the treasurer would be here, because she, I think, has that balance, and I haven't, she wasn't here today, so.
Okay. Go ahead.
I, I promise I won't be this long. I did have one other handout on this item, which it says FYE 19, it's got a bunch of towns on it, it's the, and what I, what I did here is, I took, so this isn't about the expenses, this is about, this is about tax rates, and so I took some data that Justin had, and it shows 10 towns that are neighboring, I guess you could say, Tiverton, and it shows the tax rate, I think Westport is unique in that they have a lag, so the Westport one, I think, is an assumption using their historical average, but it's pretty close. So it shows Bristol, Fall River, Little Compton, Middletown, Newport, Portsmouth, Somerset, Tiverton, Warren, and Westport, and it shows that the average and the median tax rate is lower than Tiverton, and that of those 10 towns, Tiverton has the eighth highest taxes. And what I, what I added here is I show what the impact would be on the difference between Tiverton's tax rate of 16.39 and what the average rate of those. and what the average rate of those communities would be. And that would be two dollars and sixty-three cents per thousand evaluation. I think roughly the average median home sale these days is about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And to put that in a real, which would be seven hundred and twenty-four dollars a year, that, that, that the average homeowner in Tiverton has to pay, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars a year, compared to the nine other communities which surround us. And, and to turn that into, show you what that would look like even more is, if you had to take money and put it in the bank, and, or an annuity that would earn, say, five percent a year, then you would need about fifteen thousand dollars just to pay that extra tax rate that Tiverton is higher than the average. And that gives you an idea, I think, of how much your home value is, has to be lower than it would otherwise be if all else was equal, comparing one town to another. But I wasn't, I thought it was interesting that you picked the ten towns, but I actually, then I went and took, and knocked out, I knocked out Somerset, and I guess they're sort of surrounding, depending on if you're swimming across Mount Hope Bay. So I took out, just, I'm not saying one's better than the other, but I took out the ten that, that Justin had, and I took out Warren and Somerset and Newport, because I'm not quite sure that they're, I can't say for sure where the exact boundary is between Newport and Middletown, but, and if you take it, those seven towns, then we are last, we are seven out of seven, and the impact on your home goes up to nineteen thousand dollars. And then I took, which is the, actually, the four towns that literally are connected to Tiverton, Fall River, Portsmouth, Little Compton, and Westport. That makes the story even worse for Tiverton, where we are over four dollars on the thousand, showing an impact of over eleven hundred dollars a year, or twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars. And so this is something I'm actually going to share with the budget committee, because they have to look at the tax liability to pay. But I just think it's important that we realize that although, I think that, much like OPEB, the curve of the tax increases over the last, you know, seven, eight years or so has, has definitely been improved over the historical average, that we're still pretty, we're, we're pretty, pretty close to, we're, we're, we're the worst of five that are, that touch us. We're the worst of seven, if you, if you throw in Middletown and, and Bristol. And then we're eighth out of ten, if you go with the closest towns. So that's what this handout is. And I, I stole the left column from your data, and I added in this thing on the bottom. So I don't know if you have any criticisms or.
I'm just wondering, so that's present value at five percent, is PB at five percent?
Present value.
And that's present value compared to what and when?
All you do, to do a real quick back of the envelope, is you take the annual impact and you divide it by the, the interest rate. So if you needed to say, if, if you need, and, and again, I'm just comparing it to the average. If you compare this to Little Compton, we're, you know, we're three times as high. I mean, that, that is almost like a seventy thousand dollar difference in home value to Little Compton. But what you would do is you say, all right, if I need eleven hundred dollars more than my neighbor across the town line for the same house and a town with the same services, all else equal, which there's room to debate, I think, in some areas, we maybe have better services, in some areas, maybe, maybe we don't. But holding all that equal, I would need to put twenty-three thousand dollars in the bank and earn five percent on that money, if I could, to come up with eleven hundred dollars a year to pay that extra taxable. And that's the idea of the present value.
Ongoing.
Ongoing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is this a useful tool as a goal for where we want Tiverton to be in terms of tax rate?
Oh, well, that's, my view is, we, I mean, I, I think that what we need to work on over time is a trajectory that brings us to the average or median, or something, you know, something other than last.
Yep.
And that somehow takes into account funding, these liabilities, the capital needs that we've heard of. And, and, you know, that's a multi-year project, but it won't happen. Much like, you've heard me applaud the town administrator for putting the liabilities in front of us. I, I think this also, we need to stare at this and say, is it, I don't think it's our intent to always be the most expensive tax town, you know, anywhere around here forever. I'm not saying we're going to fix it all in one budget cycle, but that's how I'm looking at it.
I'd like to look at it that way, yeah.
Another thing that, that's not talked about with the, the higher taxes is that when you want to sell your home, you have to make up for the difference. People won't buy the house unless you bring the, the price of your house down, because the taxes are high. So it's sort of a, an unintended tax, because to sell your home, to get it moving, you need to bring the price down, or people won't touch it, because they can get a, a house of probably the same value for less taxes somewhere else. So that has to, you know, that, that hits you in the pocketbook on, on that scale. So I think it's something to, to consider also, is what, what value are you getting? The affordability of the taxes for the services that are, are in town? And what do you have to look at for what the, what the results are as far as roads and, and what the taxes are paid for? What are you looking at for a result for the high taxes that you're paying? So I just think all that has to be considered.
Well, it does have arguably a current effect. I mean, I, I'm, I'm under the belief that the higher cost of Tiverton's high-end market versus, say, Portsmouth had, had an effect in the last valuation of shifting our tax burden to the lower, not lower income, but the, the lower-valued properties in town, because comparatively, it matters much more if you're buying a million-dollar house and you save a hundred thousand dollars by going in Portsmouth versus Tiverton. That'll suppress values in Tiverton on the high end. And when you evaluate, when you put out your valuation for the, to figure out your tax, where who pays what taxes, the, the lower end of our, of our market has to go up. So I, I think that's an important, pretty immediate effect of this kind of thing. To, to get to the, the budget itself, I thought it, I did, I put all the, I got all my, all my old budget committee spreadsheets and, and put them, put all of our latest information together. And just for the public's awareness, where, where we're standing right now, between the administrator's initial request and the school department's initial request, is a seven point seven percent increase in the tax levy, which is obviously above the four percent cap. And that will, as things stand right now, a lot of estimates and stuff go into this, but where we stand right now is a seventeen dollar and sixteen cent tax rate, which is significantly higher than sixteen thirty-nine, which is where we currently are. So with that, why don't we turn to the workshop portion?
Can I ask a question about that? So when you say that, you take into account that, are you saying that because of all the funding requests that have been submitted? Or are you taking into account the funding proposals as well, such as what is not being funded through a tax levy potentially?
Well, to generate that number, I took your initial request. I added in the schools' bottom line, because that's all that goes into our budget factoring. I also added the capital improvement plan and the revenue sheet, the latest that I had. And that's what generates that tax rate and that tax change. Does that answer your question?
Well, it, it does, but it doesn't leave me less puzzled, because I tried very hard when we were developing the budget to figure out what the impact might be on the tax levy and the tax rate. And as far as I know, certainly the initial request would not have to result in an increase in the tax rate. And I do understand that, you know, there is a significant capital request, but by at least having us look at the possibility of using casino revenue for that, you can catch up on what I consider to be pretty urgent capital needs without necessarily increasing the tax rate. I just want that to be clear, because it's not unusual to hear a lot of rhetoric that we're just proposing things without any consideration of, you know, what it does to taxes, and that was not really the case. And I'm, I'm a little taken aback that, you know, when you, and I do know that both requests are big, and, and the school department's request is big as well, and there's a significant increase there, that it would result in that much of an increase in the tax levy.
Okay, I mean, it's just, it's just the math. I, I just put it, I put it in my, our standard spreadsheet that we've always used, and that's what it came out of, which to my mind indicates a need, you know, for us, as we develop the council's request, to, to take that into consideration and hopefully other entities in town will also do the same. It wasn't meant to be any kind of an affront, it's just when I put all the numbers together, and I got latest, the latest motor vehicle information and estimate for the valuation from the tax assessor, that's just where the numbers come out. So were there budget questions?
Is it kind of, is it open floor?
Yeah, go ahead, open floor.
I know, I, I think I asked about this at our last one of these, but just on the debt service. So the next bond that would be paid off in the regular course, because we refinance some of these, so the, is not going to be Ranger. I guess the next one will be the TIF bond, is that, do we agree on that? And that's going to be?
Yes.
Oh, what year is that? That looks like twenty twenty-two, meaning fiscal year ending twenty twenty-two. So the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget would, we'd have, we'd have about, almost seven hundred thousand dollars of, of free, of cash payments freed up. How far are you, how far away is twenty twenty-three? It's actually not that bad, right? What is it, twenty nineteen now?
Well, we're talking fiscal twenty twenty now. So it's not the next year, but the one after that. And also, if you, if you look at the, our regular payments on vehicles, like the lease payments and such, about half of the three forty expires after this year, so in the next fiscal year, there'll be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars freed up by that one, assuming we don't undertake any more leases.
So that's pretty substantial, and then, okay, so I'm sorry, I didn't mean to roll over that point. So what you're saying is, like, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars frees up?
Twenty, in the, the next fiscal year, not this one we're discussing now, but in twenty twenty-one.
And then, and then, and then in twenty twenty-three, then we'll have another seven hundred thousand.
Are you talking about the TIF, it's not twenty-two?
I think the last payment is made in twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
So then, starting with the twenty, the fiscal year ending June, three, twenty-three, we'd have seven hundred thousand dollars of potentially free cash to, saying that there's, there's, there's hope.
I don't know.
Can you explain what you mean by it frees it up and we'll have cash? I'm not sure I completely follow that.
That's one of the tough questions. Well, if you had, if you and I shared, let's just say, funding long-term capital needs or long-term liabilities, or trying to drive the, you know, if we had a plan to drive the tax rate down to something closer to the average, I'd, I'd take some comfort in knowing that it is, you know, we might have to wait a year or two or three, but there's, it's doable, right? I think it's doable. I mean, if you took all seven hundred thousand dollars of that, plus the hundred and fifty that you're talking about, that's almost like a million dollars, and you spent half of it on, half of it on capital, half of it on tax. Those are real numbers. And then it just gets better and better, right? So then you get to twenty twenty, I guess it would be twenty-eight would be the next?
Twenty-seven.
Or no, we refinanced that one, too, huh? Is that one refinanced, though? Oh, okay, no, no, that's right, that is with the refinance, okay. Yeah, then, then we really have a breakout then, because the schools are essentially beginning, getting paid, paid down. So that's, you know. Far be it for me to say how you would spend three, three or four million dollars of debt service, you know, three to eight years from now, but you can do a lot of money, you can do a lot of capital, you can do a lot of tax rate, you can do a lot of pay downs on liabilities with three or four million dollars a year, and that's not that far off. So it's just something to think about, and I, I, I'm not saying we all agree on everything, but I think, but I, at least what I think I see is a consensus of really trying to look towards a longer-term planning and, you know, not just going year to year and casting it out.
Nancy, Donna, have you, do you have any budget questions or anything that Donna was like?
You talking to me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just open floor.
So I, I sort of went through, I mean, it's, it's, it's going one, item by item, but I was sort of going through stuff that we're asking for in the new budget, like the trust fund, the share of three hundred thousand. I don't, I'm, I'm just, I know we just sort of talked about the OPEB and the problem, but I've been looking, doing a lot of reading on it, and there just, there really is, to, to establish a fund that would be large enough if, if no other changes were made to contributions, et cetera, that would cover it. It's going to take many, 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 what are we, nineteen million or twenty million behind in terms of funding? And, or having of, having it being funded. So my first question is how that, whether, whether other things could be, I think the state is going to have to think of, there's going to have to be some solution to this, and I'm not sure every town making their three hundred, two hundred, a hundred thousand contribution is ultimately going to really get at the problem, so that's one thought I had. The other, I thought it was nineteen, but maybe.
Nineteen on the town, six to seven on the schools.
Right.
I think we've shaved over a million dollars off of OPEB if we've heard this contract, but.
I mean, it's interesting, one of, one of the towns that I read about was, it was in Massachusetts, but Andover, and they were, they definitely came up with a funding program to try to get their funding in line. But they also are making a real effort to have employee contributions be fifty percent. And it's not a happy solution, but these are big questions that have to be answered. And then I went through.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, yeah.
I don't think it's either or.
Correct.
It's both.
Yep.
And the other things, I don't want to get into an argument or anything. I am aware that in this state, all communities are facing this, and most communities are trying to find a way to reduce the unfunded liability, in part by looking at employee contributions, and in part by funding, and doing that, for example, through the inter-local trust, which helps a tremendous amount, because if you join the pool, you have a much better investment opportunity.
Are we a member of that pool?
Well, we, we are and we aren't, it depends on what we're talking about. And that's a whole other discussion that could be had, but what I do know is that there seems to be a pretty good consensus, not that everybody acts accordingly, because I think there are a whole bunch of municipalities still way behind on their unfunded liability, to the point that they're being considered at risk, from, you know, a fiscal perspective, from the state's revenue department's perspective, et cetera, et cetera. We're not at the bottom by any means, but there's a serious question, at least in my mind, as to whether you're going to sufficiently reduce your unfunded liability only through employee contributions. And that's not to diminish or discount the importance of that. I think it is very important, and I think everybody has recognized it in the latest negotiations as well. But the reason I put it in is that I believe funding, contributions to the OPEB will be needed. You can have a disagreement with that, but. you can have a disagreement with that, but I wanted, once again, to put that on the radar screen, and not only as a one-time payment, but as something that you actually would have to do on a pretty regular basis, in order to make some progress.
I mean, I was just struck with this one article I read, which did deal with Massachusetts, but the healthcare costs in, in the, in Mass, in the 50 largest municipalities grew by 85%, while property taxes grew by 42%, and it sort of points out the problem and what's...
Can I ask, on the, on inter-local trust, and I appreciate on MERS for pensions at the state level, there's, there's certain, you have to be a certain percentage funded in order to join, is there, are there similar standards for the inter-local trust to join there?
I, I believe so, I can't give you the exact, you know, policies that they have, but they, they are pushing municipalities and working with municipalities, how can you, you know, reduce this, this further, so?
Right, because, and one of my thoughts with, I, I agree we, we should put money into this fund, the question is, you know, what? I mean, we're, we're sort of picking, we are, we're all sort of picking numbers out of the air, but if we, if we had an idea that the inter-local trust was a place we wanted to be with that particular fund, and they have a standard of, you know, you have to be 25% funded, and we realize if we put this in for five years, we can get there at the end of that, that, that would be one way to actually pick a number, you know, on a range from nothing to everything we can possibly put into it.
Would you, I, I support at least getting a line item on there, so we have to look at it every year, even if it's, but you know, something's better than nothing, and do you, maybe not this year, or maybe next year, would you, do you think it, would it work wild to put something on there for the accrued time liability as well? I don't know how.
And I don't know that much about it either, I do know it can be very significant, and to some extent, there are, you know, efforts as well to bring that further down, so that you don't have this perpetual rollover and, you know, compounded accrual, so to speak, of...
Right, I mean, we're, we're paying it when due, so it might be that the current budget supports it, we just don't know for sure if it's, if it's a growing liability.
Well, this, this involves guesstimating on the part of, among others, the treasurer, who looks at the trends and tries to do the best he can, but also with input from professionals as to, you know, how do you estimate, and there are always requests to department heads, who do you know is going to retire? Who do you think may retire? And all of that information goes into these estimates.
And the unfunded liability, is that what you're talking about? Do you know how that account started? It started with just the ABSME, because every time an ABSME person left, we had to pay them all that accrued time, and we could not hire, and the same thing with the police now, we could not hire until that payoff was finished, because they didn't have the funding. So then they started this little account, and it's now kind of grown where any department...
So we have, we have that account?
It's small, we have an unfunded liability, we should, and, but it's kind of a first come, first served type thing, it's, you know, it's, yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, I saw that.
So, years ago, you couldn't even hire, so you were, in the end, it was costing us, we were paying overtime, and everything together, and that's where that began. It's 2,300, we funded with, I guess this past year, we had, yeah, it was 100,000, it's on page six of that draft budget.
Missing page six. Yeah, thank you.
So now, page six?
Right after social security on the formula.
Yeah, at the end of the finance administration.
You're just about fired.
I was fine.
So that probably handles two to three retirements a year.
So now, is this a, is this another one of these accounts that rolls over, or do we just put this in there as an estimate of what we're going to have to pay out?
As a road rule.
Okay, so we're estimating, we'll, we'll have to pay out somewhere around the order of $100,000 in the upcoming year to people who do retire that year. If they don't, that goes back into general fund, if they do, and if more people retire than that, we have to come up with it, but that's sort of the, the guess on our pay-as-you-go system.
Well, that's better than, so that is, that's essentially the accrued time, when you say unfunded liability, it's not the OPEB, it's not the pension, this is sort of everything else for accrued time.
And then on some of our contracts, we have where we pay out, like the unused sick time, things like that, so that all helps towards this, because this is what was happening, you get your unpaid whatever with students, and now some of the contracts, June, or July, whenever they get paid, whatever, I think the police, police fire and the teams do that, John? Those three get paid on sick time, unused sick time, so it's not accruing and keep paying, and if it is, it gets them to work.
Right, but this isn't, it's, it's kind of different than what we're talking about with OPEB and pensions, because there, we're trying to save up for investment, and in the long term, whereas this is actually what we intend to pay this particular year.
And if it isn't used, it goes back to general fund?
If it's not, it goes back in the general fund, you can't, you know, you can't roll it over.
Yeah.
They used to.
We would have to do a resolution or something.
There's a resolution that says that it's back in general fund, except for the, you know.
Could you use that?
You have to put that into that category, but quite frankly, most years, you don't have that. You have to balance it. Do you think over the history of how much was in there? 100 is probably the max we ever put in there.
Okay, so we might actually be in good shape on that, though.
Well, it's just that it's not such a large amount, you can't pay as you go.
Do you have three or four, they, ABSME people that retired at the same time, you're over that.
Right. It's a liability that's out there, you know, in a perfect world, you'd have that 1.2 million dollars in an account somewhere accruing interest, so that you know it's there, I mean, the idea behind the pensions, as I've always taken it, was you, you pay into it such that when they retire, you're done paying for that employee, because investments carry them through their entire retirement, that's kind of the goal, so here, it's, it's a similar thing, where we've just got this liability that's built up, and it's almost like we should, at the end of each year, we should see what has been accrued and put that into, and, and so it would grow and we can invest it, but that's, you know, long-term funding kind of thing.
Is that something you could do, we could do by resolution?
Wouldn't we be that by resolution?
Well, I think, I, I don't know, if you're projecting forward, I'm thinking, after this budget, we'll kind of have, well, we're, we're, everybody's starting to do work, like the capital plan and all that, to plan things out in the future, and so what I would imagine is a lot of these things, we would, we would just put into a, some kind of a charter change, so that the restricted funds exist, and, and you don't have to do the resolutions every year, and that would, that would be that, so you could pick which ones you want to catch up on and have a plan scheduled to do that. That would be my, my suggestion, is do a charter change.
We, we do resolutions, though, so we could do that, and that reminds me, are, are resolutions due at the same time the budgets do?
I think so. No? Okay, we have more time.
I don't think so.
I did have one question on the elections account, which is rolling over, and I noticed in this year, which was an election year, they didn't spend the new money we gave them, and yet we rolled over something like $45,000 into that account from prior years, do we still, do we need to continue rolling that over, and do they even need any new funding for the upcoming year?
You need to, the whole idea of setting that so that it would roll over is that we wouldn't hit those peaks and valleys, so all of a sudden, next year, I'm going to have a presidential election, a primary, and a general election, that's going to generate, I'm going to use a lot more that year than I do, this past year, we just had a smaller election, not non-presidential, so we're trying to keep it at a smoother pace, so that we don't have to budget 60,000 one year and 20,000 the next. And by rolling it into the year, we just keep it at a smoother pace, I think there's like, is there 60-some thousand in there now at this point?
I think so, something around that.
Yeah, but on this coming budget, we've only requested 20, or 25.
25.
25. So, we're going to need that, because we have three elections next year. And even though the primary and stuff starts after July 1st, run up to it doesn't, so...
What are the three?
Well, we had agreed to after we had that, and one of the reasons we rolled it over, I think, three years ago, when we started this, was that we wanted to be able to just budget 21 year, 30 another, 20 another, 30 another, or keep it at 25, and we were going to try to pace out and see where it would, you know, end up.
So the last presidential election would have been fiscal year 17, right? Losing track of my...
No.
16.
18.
16 to 17.
2020 is the next presidential election.
Right, but the last one was, the election was in 16, so that would have been fiscal year 17, and I, it looks like, according to the audit, we actually spent 30,000 for that year.
From that November on.
Well, for full, full fiscal year, so...
Right, because the elections are in November, but the cost on some of this stuff starts before the July 1st, you're seeing it year to year, you need to combine some of those numbers.
I see.
You know, I don't start that election July 1st, we're already going to be revving up to it. But it is restricted, and we don't do anything from it, and I, like I said, we're only requesting 25 this year.
If I may, I think on that, as well as perhaps the unfunded liability account, even though I'm sure this is not being done to, to stow money away for secret purposes, it might make sense to look back over the past years and see, you know, how this all works out over a number of years. Clearly, at some point, or at least to me it's clear, there was a concern with those extreme peaks and valleys, and that it would, you know, sort of shocks to the system, and tax rates going up and down like crazy, and I think that's a good prudent approach to have, but it's also good to verify, and it's rather easy, I think, to extract these numbers and take a, look at them, yeah.
Sort of get a sense of, period of 10 years, what the level has been.
In a, almost a perfect world, I think you take a plus or minus 20% to these, and then you can aggregate it and almost have like a swing account, if you aggregated them in a couple of different spots, because, you know, it might be this year that we don't, you know, we have a really good year on sand and salt, you know, plowing, but in that year, who knew, there was, you know...
Which is exactly what is happening this year.
Right, but it's, I tried to, I tried to work on something like this years ago, and it just, it just got hard to convince people to put an undesignedated swing account, it's just like painting a target.
I just think it's transparency, if everything is, you know, you're not hiding money, you're showing what the result is of doing this approach, and it either works or it doesn't work. If it does work, it may be a prudent way to avoid those shocks to the system.
We essentially do that with council contingency in some way, though I understand part of the council contingency is supposed to be have a, have a labor negotiation piece.
Which is also my question, that, that's going up significantly, is there a reason?
And, and it may, it may get, it may get adjusted, given that we're close to, hopefully, getting one contract ratified, we're making progress in another, if we're lucky, we're going to get two more done before next fiscal year, but we should be able to adjust this budget with new information about, for example, the police salaries.
Correct, and overtime and that kind of stuff.
And then that could be, that could be, you know, reduced in the contingency fund if, once we get to that point.
You remind me, I'm, I apologize if I missed this, the lighting expense increase, is that part of the, that's just not in the capital piece, or is that...
We went over this the last time, I believe, or, and there was also discussion in the budget committee, and frankly, I, I don't know always which one was which, after a while, there was, the treasurer found it was absolutely necessary to increase it, in part because the previous year was underfunded fairly significantly, I believe, and also, we had the rebates from the LED conversion that counted against some of that, so that brought down one number, and we can't necessarily count on getting the same amount of rebate, there's a partial rebate left, but it will be much smaller than what we received, so she felt it was important to, again, be on the cautious side, because you can't tell the power company that we don't have money to pay them. We have to pay them, basically, is what it comes down to.
The landfill operations, the OT, like, I don't understand why it went up so much, you know?
We are now on the public works, and then further down, landfill?
Yeah, the landfill, 5530, 505.
And what, you mean the overtime?
Yeah.
Right, okay, I don't know if we explained it here, we explained it in the budget committee, what the new DPW director did is shift the overtime expenses to the extent they were actually incurred for the landfill operations to the landfill account, and previously, the overtime that was incurred by the folks working at the landfill was charged to the DPW account. So he, he just wanted to show where it actually is being incurred, the expense.
Oh, okay.
And although the percentage is crazy high, the actual increase is not that high once you start looking at it that way. And, and Rick is here, in case you need further explanation on that, so, he's being very quiet, though.
Would you like any more?
No, I, I, I think that it was transferred to another account, made the percentage really high, because I guess there wasn't anything there to begin with, I think I'm all set on that.
It was something like a hundred dollars or something like that.
Right, right.
That doesn't cover the vacation, somebody who related to the station, working on site, and somebody asked to cover.
But, Jan, what you were saying is, it is something that hit me, a lot of these things under fire and police is all part of, these numbers are going to change, obviously. The medical physicals was something on the fire department, why, why did that go?
That too was discussed at the budget committee, it's too bad that we...
You don't have joint meetings.
Yeah, as Bruce explained it, he looked at how much money had been set aside for medical, and he came to the conclusion it was woefully inadequate, that currently, we're really not doing well in terms of making sure that the personnel that we have get their medicals done every year, and he believes that it's absolutely imperative that it happens every year, that we need to work with them to make sure it happens. In addition, some of the testing costs are likely to go up because of turnover, so, you know, every time you hire new people, you have the additional cost of testing that they have to go through, so... But he was very, and, you know, generally speaking, he really looked for ways to see if there was perhaps room in the budget to reduce the numbers, and he did it in a couple of places, but this one, he was just like, he couldn't believe that we were funding it at such a low level, because we really, you know, for, for purposes of safety, really both for the staff and for the people that we're trying to service, it's pretty important that people are in good physical shape.
Do all these people go to their own doctors, or is there a doc, does a town have a doctor who does the...
They go to their own, I believe, yeah.
And then, is, is this a revaluation year coming up? Or the restricted revaluation account?
The revaluation, part of, I don't know, part of the increase has to do with the fact that a special revaluation needs to be done for the power plant, and he needs to hire an expert assessor for that, it's, it's, it's not your typical, you know, residential revaluation, and that, his expectation is that you make that money more than back by, you know, spending it on a professional who knows how to do that. And also, we are heading towards a full revale, I'm not sure if it's in FY twenty, I think it may be FY twenty. Well, you have these different ones, the statistical one versus the, the full flexed one and one is significantly less costly than the other and it's dictated by state laws to, you know, what the cycle is for those.
And I think, he said it apropos of something else at our last meeting, I think it was Dave Roberts, there was some potential change in state law that was going to save money on revaluations and so he had decreased what he was asking for in, for his regular buildup based on the prospect that that might come to fruition, but it didn't. So now he's, he increased that decline to, to catch up, basically, so that when it comes, we don't have a big hit.
I think on that election account, at one point, at a budgeting point, we might have been thinking of a special election, that it could have possibly been a special election and that's why the prior year was forty five thousand.
Right.
And I think we were talking about the need that we may have to have one. We have to have an election or it costs X amount of dollars whether it's budgeted or not, I'm going to have to do it. So I think we were talking about a special election at that point, too. Remember everything.
I just look back till 2012 and it's never, we've never spent more than thirty thousand dollars on elections in a year.
Fifteen?
No, fifteen to thirty is the range, I mean, maybe thirty one, but nothing much more than that.
I don't know, I have the numbers in there though.
But I'm, so, it does look like.
But I do remember talking about a, that there could be a special, I don't know if it had to do with the child or whatever, but at the budget time, we were talking about it.
But you're saying that, so let's say the number of 2020 general election, it'll be activity before June 30th, 2020. Says two fiscal years that are hitting a, at least a presidential.
Right, we don't start at July. We're already going through trainings and stuff and if they put in anything like that, really, I personally like it, but that'll be costly.
What, what?
I do, I, I.
No, I didn't hear what you said, did they put in anything like what?
No, early voting or any of that, you know, that they go back and forth with stuff like that. Will have an impact on cost, but it'll be a lot easier to vote.
We can't just put it in your office and?
Your, your assistant, is she in the, she exempt from the, from here?
She's not in the, you're here.
Exempt from what?
I think what we're, I mean, we don't have to stay here until eleven just out of, you know, form, but this is just a forum for, because we don't have to vote this week, but this was just for discussion of anything as we've been looking at it. So there's, there's no format, if you have a question, go ahead and ask it and if we're run out of questions, we'll adjourn early and maybe make that up by staying extra late next time.
One question we talked about was potentially, and I don't know if this is the time to bring it up or just throw out ideas, of expanding the capital improvement program to a wider timeframe? Is that something that there's an appetite for?
I think the, the more direct question is, is that a feasible thing or what, would that actually have an effect if we were to, I mean, in the, in the early years, you know, if you spread it out and you buy a $260,000 rescue, you know, you can't really, those are harder, harder costs, but.
I don't think it would have that much of an effect and I think that's why typically, you know, these, these rolling five-year plans are using that number of years. When we do it, I mean, we even took certain things out and say, well, actually, we can probably wait until after five years. In a way, it would be nice to show it anyway because you get sort of the continuity of things, but then you get very big documents too, so. Basically, what we're trying to do is when we say we need something in FY twenty, put it in context that, you know, we're trying to spread these things out so that it doesn't all happen in one year and to the extent things can wait, we try to schedule it in such a way that, again, it avoids those peaks and valleys and we try to err on the conservative side, you know, not on, well, let's be safe and buy it a year sooner if we can, like really look at what is the realistic timeframe. And it's still a learning curve, you know, because we haven't been doing this for some time and I think it takes getting used to a little bit and also it will help focus more on if we're talking about, for example, the DPW vehicles or fire engines and rescue trucks, you know, what is really the, the life cycle of these vehicles and what can be done to incorporate that experience into the budget process.
And I, I would just reiterate with, I won't say again how much I like the start that you've done in this, or someone will make fun of me, but the, take the plan that you've started and, and add to it the total liability or range and I, I feel like I've heard in some settings, it's like, oh no, we have to have these experts come in and we have to spend all this money, we, we have to spend money on the actuaries before we can estimate. I would suggest you just do, like, what I just tried to do with the OPEB, is it, is it wrong? I mean, it's probably within plus or minus 20% and, you know, it's such, we're so far off and there's so much money, the, the need is so big, it doesn't actually have to be accurate, so instead of spending, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on a consultant, I'd give it to your DPW director and take your best shot on what it would take to bring the, every road in the town up to a certain standard and then do a couple of different scenario analysis and put it on there. And then that's the kind of thinking that we, we really would do and then, and then, you know, we can look at things and say, okay, well, here's all this ash that we've, we are currently spending on capital in the form of buildings and, you know, it, it looks like there's going to be two, three hundred thousand dollars of, of what is capital equipment spending, we'll call it a little capital lease, coming online in the next year or two, another seven hundred thousand dollars in just three years, you know. We actually have some opportunities to, to fund that and then with the casino revenue, I actually think it's possible to get the tax rate down to that average and still fund these needs within, you know, not this year, not next year, but in the next five years or so. So that would be.
Save money.
You know, maybe, maybe, I have to tell you, maybe, maybe once a month, you pick a part of the capital plans, okay, in, in July, I'm going to talk, we're going to think about roads and then in August, we're going to think about, something like that.
The one thing I just want to add, I think, I, I totally get that, you know, we want to look at, you want to look at tax relief, you also recognize there are capital needs, you want to balance those things.
And the unfulfilled liabilities.
Right, and when it comes to capital needs, it's my unfortunate conclusion that we are way behind and we need to catch up and that by not doing that sooner rather than later, when we actually have the opportunity to do so without necessarily increasing taxes, we're actually looking at a bigger expense down the line.
One other thing I was going to ask is the status of rollover accounts or reserve accounts, did we, did we get that, that's, we need the treasurer for that report? Okay. That's a pretty important piece of information. I mean, you have, we have the audit, that's as of June 30.
I was, I was just noticing that the, the audit, if you look under, starting around page 113, the latest one, which is supplementary information, budgetary comparison schedule, for anything that has, it's called encumbrances carried, it shows you what it was at the beginning of the year and then what it is at the end of the year. So for, for example, in elections, the audit's telling us that we carried into the current year forty four thousand eight hundred seventy two dollars. So that should have at least those ones that we've done by resolution. I don't, I still haven't found things like the industrial park fund and that kind of thing, I don't, I don't know that that's in the audit. I mean, there are a ton of numbers to sift through, but that'll, that'll be a good place to, to figure out what's been carried over and such.
It may also be worthwhile mentioning again that when I propose a capital budget and a five-year capital budget approach, part of that proposal is to roll over these accounts subject to, you know, review and approval, but that the presumption is that these are the types of items or programs that you, you need to have some buffer to deal with things that you can't completely predict, but it's also important to not just assume like, oh, well, they're, they're using it the right way, we should be able to show at the end of the year what the results are and, you know, if there is a larger need somewhere else, it can be reallocated, re-appropriated, but I think a, a rollover review and a vote or a resolution on rollovers is, is an appropriate mechanism to, to do that.
So you, you would evaluate accounts that roll over every four years, is that what you're?
I don't know the answer to the question, but I, I, I think we should be doing it, we should be able to show every year what the status is and then make a recommendation as to.
I would suggest there's even a more fundamental issue of, you know, and, and I consider myself, you know, quite a taxpayer, I would say, why is it the case that everything's going to sweat for the general fund? And I've, I tried in a former life to say a certain percentage of all accounts will roll over and that way there isn't, and, and it's an incentive and I'm not here to suggest that, you know, just, the reality is that if it's a use it or lose it situation, and we all know from federal governments, you know, that sometimes.
That's out of order. We don't, we don't talk about that.
I've offended somebody somewhere, so. So, you know, I feel like in the past, I've tried to suggest, I mean, what if, what if all of these accounts have a percentage and we've, we've been picking, you know, it's going industrial park, a little percentage over here, drainage page, we sweep it here, like, we've been doing this in this piecemeal way and is it worth a conversation to say that if management doesn't spend it all, you know, then some fraction, maybe it's a small fraction, is rolled over and that is some of that cushion? I mean, I guess you kind of get there with a lag because it goes into the general fund and then it gets audited and then the next year it's available to spend down, but.
Well, I like it in the sense that we have accountability to keep track of, within each account, what's going on.
Because it used to, it, it used to be the council had to vote to put it into the rollover and then vote again to pull it out of the rollover. I guess that's still the case unless, but, but now unless there's an FTR resolution behind it.
It doesn't stay in that.
Maybe we used to have an omnibus resolution that allowed us to do that. Yeah.
But your reports show the rollovers too. You know, Justin, on that election account this year, I spent thirty six thousand six hundred sixty five dollars, so I don't know where you're getting, but we have it's not matching up.
You said thirty six.
This, that last election in November, thirty six thousand six hundred sixty five dollars. I know those numbers aren't matching to what I know is, I don't know why.
Well, I didn't have the, when I just spoke, I didn't have the this year's number, I was looking at prior audits, but.
So if you take, for example, sand and salt, right, so, so that, we're probably going to end up in a favorable position, probably, I mean, who knows, it's only February, in February, so that is not subject to a restriction, so all that's going to get swept back into the general.
It actually will not, but that's just because of specific circumstances. It's already more or less spoken for.
We'll fill, we'll fill the shed.
Because of other expenses that are, no.
Or we can.
No, it's, but we were actually just talking about it, how we're going to pay for this extra expense that had not been anticipated. Well, maybe we're lucky and we won't get all that snow and then we'll be a little extra money and that's how a lot of it goes in, in the budget here, especially when you have tight budgets. Like, well, we don't quite know how we're going to pay for it and then we get lucky.
Well, that's all these transfers, so we can, it's.
Well, you know, I mean, you can't just, at least I, I don't think it's prudent to rely on, you know, the ability to transfer. You should, you should do a good job budgeting if you can, so.
And I'm, I'm not sure we all agree, but I don't even know that it's appropriate for the council to make transfers when the people have spoken in FTR and it's on some things, right? So there's, there's a little bit of a tension there. So how do we, so the current rollover, that's, we'll just hope, we'll hopefully we'll get that from the treasurer and, I mean, this is great, but this is.
Well, it's in the budget actual, I just, I didn't, I got organized and put everything in folders, which I forgot to bring, so.
Oh, okay.
But I think.
In the regular budgets, I mean, regular budgets.
Right, like paving and stuff. It shows that it's a transfer.
Yeah.
Into the current year.
Yeah, I'd love to see every single one, whether it was on the FTR or not on the FTR, because even speaking from a charter review commission, I've been a little nervous from applying at the charter point of view, going through the FTR.
Did anybody have more questions? Anybody from the public, Adam, Mr. Trump?
Richard Robb, 27, Cornell Road. I have a question on the bonds on page one. The library bond has a principal that we pay three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year and then the interest is about one eighty seven, it's down to one seventy seven. It's, the, the, it says a library bond, singular. Now, so my understanding that the bond was 2.9 million dollars. When you're paying interest, when you're paying a principal of three hundred and forty thousand, you're paying that off at about an eight-year rate, but down here, it says that it's get paid, it's paid off in, in the year 2035, which would mean it's a twenty year bond. So I'm a bit confused, my numbers aren't, either, either the bond is for more than 2.9 million or we're paying at a, a faster rate.
Might be, I hope it's not the case that it doesn't, this is, this is gross of the reimbursement.
Yeah.
So that means the situation isn't as good as I hoped.
But we put that reimbursement into the revenue side, I believe.
Okay.
Fifty percent.
So you're telling me, well, we don't have reimbursement for the TIF bond, but as the schools and the library get paid off, it's actually not, this is a great point you're getting this to, is, it's not that we're going to actually have three hundred and forty thousand dollars of debt service for the library because some of that is being reimbursed, the reimbursements would stop.
I don't, it was my understanding, I guess I need to look into this further, that there were three bonds for the library, one federal, one state, one local and the local was 2.9 million and it's our responsibility.
I think technically the, the bond paper is like six million, but the state is sending in revenue of two million or three million and then we turn around and, so the, the net cost of the town is closer to that 2.9 million. This is the gross cost.
Oh, I see, so you're thinking maybe the state and the local are, are combined in this spreadsheet.
For the expense side and.
I see.
The problem, at least now or then, is that, so let's say that the Fort Barton refinance, which is debt service of about seven hundred thousand dollars, that's gross debt service, right? So we probably get reimbursement from the state of about three hundred thousand out of that stuff.
Oh, all right, all right, that, that would make sense then.
So we want to, so that's a little. So we want to, so that's a little bit worse.
We got three hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-seven from the library in revenue back. But you're seeing there is gross, but we, it's also shown on the revenue, the portion of reimbursement.
Okay.
So each month, the revenue stays and comes out.
Yeah.
That's on there.
All right, thank you.
On the school side, the school housing, at least in the upcoming budget, is eight hundred fifty-eight thousand in reimbursement, so.
I think it was money left over from the Essex library sale that went towards some of the payment, if I'm correct.
And this is the last year that there is money from the, yeah.
Something like that.
Three?
Three hundred? So much one year, so much.
They sold it four hundred thousand dollars, and it was a little bit, yeah.
So we know there's, there's contributions for the library and for schools. Off the top of our head, do we know of any other capital, like if we built a new DPW building?
We have the impact statements if we built something.
There's no other.
We wish.
Schools or libraries, basically.
So I understand it.
I don't have an effect, it's just a general obligation. There's no reimbursement on that. First, we're all school alone.
So we need to build more schools and then park DPW equipment in the schools. New tech school.
Then we get more impact fees.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Thanks for this.
So then our next meeting will have to go to twelve-thirty. So get plenty of sleep the night before, equally.
If it would help, because you don't have that many meetings left, I think, to do this, and only so much time to schedule, and then if, if you spend more time in between and you come up with questions, I took down all the questions that I can't really answer tonight, and I can, you know, check with Denise in particular or others, but if questions come up, you know, feel free to give them to me, and I'll try to have the answers ready next time. And the other question I have is, I'm really, I wasn't quite sure what to do in terms of asking department heads to be there, because the last time, they sat here for a long time for, you know, and, and their presence was not necessarily required. If you anticipate that there will be questions where it's important to hear from department heads to get additional detail, you know, please let me know, and I can ask, or if you say the next time, just try to have as many as you can, we can do that too.
All right, this is due the sixth of March?
I was just going to ask what our calendar is.
We have a workshop on Tuesday, another one Tuesday, February twenty-sixth.
We have it the twenty-sixth, and we have one March fourth.
Monday, March fourth.
And it's due on the, I think, the eighth, the sixth of the eighth.
Maybe doing the questions and, you know, me trying to make sure we have answers before, you know. Or you might be, might save some time.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if that's merits a little bit of discussion, because I, I mean, I don't have any trouble with any council member contacting Yan or even a department head, if that's okay with Yan, to ask these kind of questions, so they don't all necessarily have to be done. And then if something actually interesting arises, maybe that's worth mentioning at a meeting. Does that make sense? Or do we like the idea of everything has to be said here?
I would add even further that let us remember, there are, there's a elected budget committee with nine people on it, the, the department heads are, and Yan are testifying, I'm sorry, eleven. Good thing I was on the budget committee once. Charter view is nine.
We were trying to make it nine.
Is, that's right, we did try to lower to nine.
Yeah.
I guess we did. So I, not only do I not think that they need to be here, I think it's almost disrespectful to ask them to be here when we can just go to the budget committee meeting or watch it on the video. I know, maybe we don't all agree with that, but, so, yeah, ask your questions ahead of time. Why are we here to, to put the administrator on the spot and the staff on the spot? If it's that important of a question, this is what our third meeting on this, you should have a pretty good idea of where you're, where you're headed.
Yeah. So when, when do we vote on this?
Well, we have a, our last workshop is March fourth, and it's due on March eighth, so.
March sixth.
On March sixth, other?
I think the burden is on, this is, the burden, I mean, the town administrator has a recommendation, and the burden is if anybody wants to change it, I think the burden is on them to come forward with the change, otherwise the motion's going to be the administrator's. So that's, that's how that will actually happen.
So what other meetings do we have? We have regularly scheduled.
On the twenty-fifth, Nancy and I were talking, we might be able to squeeze a little generous time in there, but I don't think so. If you're going to Bay Street, it's going to be, you've got the whole twenty-sixth, you have the twenty-fourth, and then you have cushion days on the fifth and the sixth, if we really need them to hit the deadline.
And do we have any other meetings in that space? Regular meetings?
No, the next one would be Monday, March eleventh.
Are you here the fourth?
Yeah. On March eleventh, I think we're going to have a lot, because I pushed off a lot of things for the eleventh, the governance, the town solicitor, RFP, stuff like that. Oh, did you want to do the playground? I had the tentatively set for the twenty-fifth. Kind of have you as the sponsor shepherd on that, or do you?
Sure, I mean, I, I haven't heard anything back. The last I had heard, we were going to look at if we could put the playground expense maybe as part of a, a forward-looking matching fund for a larger project of the town, uptown farm, if that would work, just information like that. I was expecting at some point to hear back from the recreation committee, I mean, I haven't been, you know, very diligent in keeping up with it, so it's, it's not, it's my fault for not doing that, but I haven't heard anything back, so I don't have a whole lot of information. Well, I mean, we've got the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, so if any time between then, and.
What are you waiting for?
Just, I hadn't heard.
Twenty-sixth is budget, that's what we mean, that's, I mean, just budget workshop. If you're not really making votes yet, it's just going to be a workshop like this.
But what I'm saying is if, if we ever run over or something before then. So, yeah, we can, we can discuss it and figure out what we want to do. I mean, it looks like it's largely in the budget for the upcoming year. And one question I had, Donna had said it off, off into one point, that if you look on the websites of, of the companies that provide the playground equipment, they have a, you know, an off-season sale every December, and I, I don't know.
That's when you need to buy it in December, or they're like fifty percent off on the expensive equipment, and it's, some, one piece goes to fifty thousand dollars, so you're paying twenty-five. That's when you need to buy it.
Can we get it stored in Donna's garage?
I mean, I don't know how you do that, because it's done by bid, but, I mean, half-price is half-price.
I kind of wonder if for municipalities, they just give you that price at the end of the day, but I think that'll be something we have to.
They might. We'll look into it, whether we can, you know, find out more about the opportunities there and to what extent that runs into the competitive procurement and stuff.
And there's a lot of grants, a lot of grants for playground equipment.
Yeah, although there too, it helps to have a plan for the recreation program, instead of just doing piece, we're thinking we need another piece of equipment here.
Right.
One of the proposals I have is to actually develop more of an overall, almost like master plan for recreational facilities, and that puts you in a much better position for grants.
Right, and what we had been discussing was asking, was it DEM or somebody, that if we were to put in a sort of emergency playground this year or next year, and then do a larger project, renovating town farm, could that playground have counted as our matching funds or something going forward? Just because it's part of the plan, and, I mean, so we, we can ask a lot of these questions, but.
Well, you still need a policy, there's no policy on playgrounds, right?
Well, who's responsibility and such?
Who's going to do it, or, I mean, that's important.
Yes, I think quite a bit of work to be done in the whole area of recreation.
Well, there's town organization that has responsibilities and stuff, I think needs a lot of looking at.
I'm trying to get that discussion started, because there's a lot of confusion.
In the free time.
And lack of capacity, you know, basically, so.
Yeah.
So is that any other business, or do we just, somebody has to move to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Okay, all right, everybody vote.
In favor, all right, we are adjourned.